One of us to be very clear. Uh, what we had last year in twenty twenty four was the seventy million that you see over on the right hand side. So again, just to highlight that we're already. Operating with less anticipated revenue. Um, the first number.
Well, that's we start the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, there's our debt, sorry.
Oh, are we on? You're on? Okay. Welcome, everyone. This is um. A special public meeting on the departmental budgets. Apologize for the late. Start, but we had some computer issue. Can you call roll, please?
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Sir Hernandez.
Here. Okay, so. We're gonna look at our uh spreadsheets here and um. The mandated amounts, of course, we can't touch. Um. But we're starting with the commissioners. And. Last number that we had. Was nine million. Five, six, seven, seven, five, two, seven. Commissioners? Do we wanna touch that?
Well, before we start there, this. Going back to Alex, when you were talking, the sixty-six, shouldn't that be sixty-four? Shouldn't we take that two, that two million off of that special project?
Let's do that right now for convenience, cross that out and cross it out.
Well, and I, I was gonna show you guys that I have the spreadsheet that way. So do you see on the bottom where I separated out that two million?
Yes.
That does, we can do it. I mean, that's just. What you guys asked for?
Yeah.
So with that. What that will do is, um.
That'll make us sixty-four, right?
Yeah.
Correct? Great.
Now, let's keep in mind. Whatever numbers. That we're at. The departments. Within several months can come back and we'll re, we'll revisit it. But right now, we gotta deal within our budget. So. Where we are is where we are. I mean, this is what we're gonna be.
So what Alex said was. Twenty twenty-four, they had seventy million, and now we have sixty-four million.
Right.
So, we're six million dollars below what they had.
Right.
Last year. And then they gave raises. So that was.
Right.
Which is another whole.
Um, one thing too, for the board of commissioners, but I think it's important to know before you get too far, just a note, and then I'll let you go through your thing. Is that historically, one thing that I've been looking at is we used, we did utilize the ARPA funding. Um, at least twice, so two years, to float three million dollars to the general fund. So essentially, when I, when I look at all this, when I kind of did a deeper dive into the numbers, that three million is what we're essentially missing. How do we have about three million dollars? Again, we've been in a better situation, but. It's the fact that our revenues were stronger in twenty twenty-four. We carried over debt into twenty twenty-five. Uh, which is off the top of our revenues. Um, and where our anticipated revenue is slightly lower. And if that has nothing to do with me, but I'm just making sure that you see those numbers and you're very well aware.
So. Seventy million that they had. And then do we add that three million on top of that? So are you telling me they had seventy-three million then?
No, no, so they used the three million dollars.
Out of the seventy million?
Out of the ARPA, so.
Is the three million in the seventy million?
It would be, I'm assuming. I don't know. I don't have the breakdown of that.
I can, if you need to know that. At some point in time.
Yeah, that would have to come on the audit.
No, the question I have, and and I guess when you hear Mr. Danzo. The budget commission is you, the treasurer, and the auditor. The budget commission is what gave, gives us this sixty-six million, six eighty-one. That figure comes from the budget commission certifying it. Is that the number you guys came up with? And when you guys came up with the, that number? What was the flexibility in that number? What, what drove you to come up with sixty-six instead of the seventy that you had the year before?
Real quick, commissioners, the seventy million does include the two million from the ARPA.
Well, she said it was two million, so I'm just repeating what. Information chunk, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Uh, Commissioners, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, and I uh. Often fill in uh for Prosecutor Watkins on the Budget Commission. That number is, I think. I would agree with the way the Auditor's Office has praised it before. It's the best. Conservative guess that the Budget Commission can come up with on what these numbers are going to look like and. Um, you know, we, we do look at them. We do approve that as the expected revenue for the county, but it is. In some part based upon just educated guess. Because we do have to look at the past sales tax incomes. Uh, we have to look at. The, you know, to the extent that the county uses property tax to fund us, uh, we have to look at what we expect to receive in there and whether we expect that we'll be able to collect all the taxes that are due. There's a, a lot of things that go into it, but you know, the bottom line is based on. Last year, based on at least the historical recent trends. That is the number that I think the Budget Commission is. Comfortable certifying at this point. We all hope that we exceed that in revenue, but, but hope is a dangerous strategy when you're trying to budget long term, you know, so. Uh. That's, that's how we arrive at that number. Is it a perfect science? No, I, I don't think it is in any county.
Was there just one meet? How many meetings did you guys meet over the year to come up with that number?
Oh, boy. Uh, I mean, we, we have regular Budget Commission meetings. This one, I think it was, I think this may have been on one or two agendas. I, I can't recall off the top of my head. Um. Like I said, we meet regularly to handle a lot of different financial things for um. Expected revenues for places, for, for certain amended certificates, all that kind of stuff, but. I, I couldn't tell you how many meetings we actually dealt with this.
And the reason I ask is we just, of course, we just came back from county commissioner training. We dealt with fifty-three counties that were in attendance or whatever it was, and they. This was a specific thing of budgets, you know, we really keyed on being in the middle of this process. Trying to do things, not trouble kind of way doing it, trying to do things the way the rest of the state does it, the way it should be done, the way the majority is taught to do it. And the one thing we saw through the meetings was. The, the. Budget commissions are of the utmost importance in every county. The re, the reason they're set up that way, the reason the ORC has to let them do that. Is to establish a fair, real number that commissioners should be able to rely on. End of the year, that, that, that are pretty, pretty true and tested. A lot of times. Those administrators keep track of it through the year. There's a budget director that follows that through the year, you know, us lacking that. You know, we're at the mercy of your budget commissioner, give us these numbers, what. What we had to start with. So I was just asking, you know, so I know in my head how solid or how flexible this number may or may not be.
And my question is, so when's the next time? Will you guys meet? And then when was it, when's the next time you revise that budget?
It can be revised. Uh, technically, I think it can be revised every meeting that the Budget Commission has if we, if we see the need for it. So the, that's the. The que, I guess the answer to that is it's revised as new information comes in to make a revision. And whether that's through the form of, you know, maybe we, we, maybe the sales tax revenue by. April, we see it's way over last year. Maybe there's a revision at that point. Maybe there's a new funding source that comes in from somewhere unexpected that, that we do an amended certificate, but it's on an as-needed basis. Uh, and I think with, with your point, Commissioner Malloy, I, I would say that. Though the commissioners aren't members of the Budget Commission, they are open meetings, they are, you know, anybody's welcome to attend. So. The commissioners or any of their staff are welcome to follow in on those meetings, to be involved in them, you know, there, there's no prohibition on that. So. Uh, if it's something that you guys, now that you've kind of seen how other counties do it, if it's something that you guys wanted to be more involved in, I, you know, there would be no problem with you being at, you know, not you specifically, but somebody being at the meetings. Uh, that wouldn't be a problem at all. Yeah.
So just to wrap this up, commissioners, maybe every other meet, um, just so we're clear.
I think next Monday is actually our next meeting.
That's correct. Um. So yes, to what Commissioner Malloy said, they will give you the anticipated. Revenue from the year. They will do a. Certificate saying this is what we feel. That can be amended, but again, you, that's based off of when, if things change though. Not necessarily right at this moment, so.
Well, and I, and I guess I want to establish this too, because. We've had some employees, even some department heads. Talking about how much money we're giving them, how much money we're, it's not the commissioners, though, this, there's a budget commission that comes up with this number, what we, what is our general fund? We are given that number. To disperse that number. We're not making the number up. The three of us. Aren't saying, hey, we're gonna roll with sixty-six million this year. This is something that's based on.
No, this is based off sales tax.
Information given to us by a.
Yeah.
The auditor, the treasurer, and the prosecutor's office doing that research of all the funds we have.
Right.
And certifying that here's how much money we have. That's, that's what I want to establish out of the gate, so. People don't think, oh, it's Rick Hernandez came in and did this, and he's only given us this much money. But it's not that at all. We are operating on. What is certified to us as every other county in the state does.
Right, so the sixty-six million, I, I think we kind of need to move on from this. That is what the anticipated revenue is, period. That is, to your point, not just. Uh, white money pulled out of the hat. That is what the anticipated revenues. Let's move on so we can keep moving. Um, Commissioners, yeah?
Another thing before we go there, um. I'm sure everybody uh saw the letter from the uh. Judge um. Blue Lord. Where um. Where the courts down there, um, they cut seven hundred thousand dollars off the original budget, um. I, I think, um. You know, we need to recognize that, um, in doing that, uh. He, he had to do some raises and, um, he's not filling four positions, so, um. The court, um. Did exactly what we asked other. Office holders and departments to do. And, um, I, I think he needs to be recognized for that, and, um. As one commissioner, I just wanna say thank you, Judge, for, uh, helping us out.
Sure. Unfortunately, we took him down a little further than what he took himself down to, but he is pretty close.
He, yeah, he.
He's pretty close to, to where we.
He's working with us, that's, that's, that's.
So Commissioners, before we start going through it, I wanna explain one thing real quick too, just to make sure it's really clear. I just changed small things, but. I want you to really look at the variances. So this is twenty twenty-four, this is really important. So we were able in twenty twenty-four to operate on sixty-four point four six three million. We actually were in the green, which meant we carried over six million dollars minus your debts, minus everything else, minus encumbered balances already. If you scroll to the top. Sorry, Molly. Like all the way back up, sorry. Or not, that's okay. But either way, the big difference that I just wanna make sure everybody understands and publicly listening is that we had a carryover in twenty twenty-four. We don't have that, and what you're projecting from what everybody's put in is way over what we have to substantiate the budget, period. So, again. Seventy million is what you had, actual money come in. Way different than the sixty-six we have now. And, yep.
Sixty-four down at the bottom.
Sixty-four.
Twenty-four.
That's actual spend, so that's what we spent in twenty twenty-four, okay? So that minus the seventy million that we had actually come in, gave us a healthy carryover. Of that. However. Debt has to come off of that.
Right.
Any incurred debt, so on and so forth, which is how they get up to what we're allowed to have, what we're anticipating revenue to share of sixty-six million. Now, go back down, I'm so sorry, Molly. What you see here is, this is where we first started. This is everybody's budget request, the first meeting. That put us ten million over, okay? Then we got back down to seventy, which put us roughly three point six over, and as of the last meeting, we went backwards. So. We were back up to seventy-three, which puts us at six point nine over. Okay, so today, that's where we're at.
I just have a crazy question, um. If, if they had six million dollars left over from last year, then why did they use two or three million dollars of ARP money? To supplement the budget?
So I.
Understand that, yeah.
That was in twenty twenty.
We could, we could have used that for.
I can tell you why. That was actually in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. So they did not supplement the budget within twenty twenty-four. So in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two. The three million dollars was floated to the general fund, not twenty twenty-four. The two million dollars was the only thing. That seventy is worth its perspective of the two million dollars from court reports.
In what year? Oh, okay, that's.
Yes, so in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two.
So there was no ARP money spent on wages?
Not for twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Correct, just for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two.
What was the carryover in twenty twenty-three?
Uh, I don't have the memory. I can see what I had, what I had to feel for it.
I'm just curious. See, if there was a carryover for that too, they still used it. They should have.
What do you have now? I'm sorry.
Okay, we need to go there. Go ahead. That just stuck out when you said that.
You know, and then, then there was a change with that too, because when you're saying twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two was Adrian Viviano, twenty twenty-three's budget was set by Adrian Viviano. Um, before Martha got here in March, so. We're talking a difference of two different people counting the money to, two different staffs.
Looks like in twenty twenty-four, going back to the previous spreadsheet, it looks like the cash balances at year twenty twenty-four was four point seven million. And then there was carryover consequences of one year, so that took it down to three point. What, three, seven, five?
So they didn't have to use ARP money back then either.
I, I.
I mean, if you, if you had a cash balance, I know.
I wasn't there, so I know.
No, I wasn't there either, but I'm just saying.
I couldn't attest to what I do.
I'm sure, I'd like to say so real quick.
Yeah.
For the record, I'm using my phone. For figures. Because I took some heat on social media about using my phone last week. So. I'm gonna utilize this, so anybody watching knows that I'm using, I'm not talking, I'm not texting. Using the phone for. Figures that I've been writing down here as we've been talking, so. For the record. All right, and it. You probably would do the same, right, Commissioner?
I'm in that too, in case you will get. That someone in the county will, will correct us with what we're saying with the text.
Yeah, I'd rather be right on the.
I want to be on the record that we are using our phones then for. Fig, fig.
I want to check it out to Mr. Chairman that you're always working.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Commissioners, I decreed an open new box for you on your spreadsheet of tw, of two twenty-eight, twenty-five commissioner cuts. So. Uh, it's up to you how you wanna proceed, but I guess we could just roll through and, and I can tell me what number to put in, because it's your budget.
Well. As I said. They can always come back at us. So we're gonna really need to cut deep. Unfortunately, with certain.
Yeah, uh, this one.
You know, certain, uh, certain ones that.
Um.
You know, aren't, the mandates, we can't. We can't touch. But, um. We have to start with the commissioners. Alex, we discussed this. Do we need to be at this number? I'm just putting you out there because.
Hey, Commissioner, with us too. What we come up with here today? I mean, some people are gonna say, oh, that's gonna lead to layoffs. They're gonna lay someone off to get to that number. We are. Any layoffs that would occur. Would not ha, occur until the. Last quarter of the year, when the money would run out of what we're doing here, and by then, we'll be able to make adjustments before that. So we may look like that in some of these things that. Oh, if you do that, I'm gonna lay people off. They're not, they're not gonna do that right now. They're just gonna have to. Be frugal with their, what they do, so we don't get to that point, and then more money comes in than anticipated. To prevent that, and every county operates that way, whether their county with forty-eight employees, as we saw this past week, our county with sixteen hundred. They're all in a bubble of, of one or two things going the wrong way, within any department there could have to face cuts. There's no county we met that was swimming in money. Anywhere in the state, so. This isn't something new. We're not reinventing the wheel here. This is, or, this is. Part of the job.
Chairman, uh, I would, what I would suggest is just after looking at the budget, I would say nine point seven five. Is more realistic for the Board of Commissioners, um, still way down from the post eleven point five, but I was trying to be safe, but you can cut that back to whatever you choose to. Um. But I do think nine point seven five, uh, would be more realistic. When you look at twenty twenty-four, we operated on nine point five six, so not asking for much of an increase there whatsoever. Um, and that is because we were able to cut costs in your office, specifically the Board of Commissioners office, uh, by restructuring, doing some things there.
So nine million, seven fifty.
That's something I would suggest, but again, it's your budget.
Well, we'll start with that.
Well. And again, we're gonna keep in mind, with everyone that's watching, everyone's gonna criticize.
Right.
We're here to work for the cause, not for applause. We're not here trying to make everybody happy. We're here to do the job that needs done with the tax for your dollars.
And then Commissioners, just so we are extremely clear, I think it's very important.
Yeah, we take care of all the utility sets.
I was just gonna say, thank you. That's what I was just gonna say. Part of this budget, and I think some things what we don't do is explain to the public what is part of this nine point seven five million. So what we hear is all the other departments explaining, you know, what they do, but we have lacked a little bit in explaining what we do. So Commissioners, let me be very clear. In line one thousand, which is your Commissioner's budget, that does not include human resources. That's my first pitch. Not one bit, not my salary, not my employee salaries, not anything. What that does include. Is your operating expenses for building maintenance, vehicle maintenance, building inspection. Board of Commissioners. All you guys as elected officials, your office staff, also your workforce development board staff, okay, your senior levy. Certain things hit, not all of it, you know, but just so you know, elderly affairs used to hit in there, uh, transit, Mike Salamoni, his. Everything reflective to run those departments are in this line level, including but not limited to utilities. For the entire county.
And we know, we know the public is getting increased, and so is the county. We don't get any discount on that, on the rate that we're paying.
If I could just, insurance too, insurance, I just wanna make sure I drive that home. Insurance is extremely expensive. We know that.
And how much did courts grow up over the last two years?
You're asking me a lot?
With the lawsuits that we had to deal with the last two years.
So I, Commissioner, I don't know, all I can tell you is last year was at about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand. Before that, before I took. This position, it was below five, it was five hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it went up about two hundred thousand dollars. I can't tell you that it was exactly over the last two years. I think it was maybe over a year and a half, I was a bit uncertain, but.
Well, we'll leave that.
Since I've been here, about a half a million.
Next.
Yeah. Auditor. Again. We were three, five. I, you know, let's, let's start cutting. Cut five hundred thousand right off the bat. Three million. That's my suggestion, and we'll, we'll come back and look at it.
Okay.
Prosecutor. Yeah.
Here at the.
Treasurer.
I think. Treasurer's at what?
I thought one, two, I thought a million. Thought I trimmed two hundred thousand. I've been writing these numbers down. Commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I've already. I've already written these numbers down.
Okay.
Um. Prosecutor. We had. Many discussions with, um, this, the prosecutor Danzo, but. Um.
So where, I mean, what are they requesting, twenty?
No, they were requested four point four six nine.
Okay.
They were three, four, eight, five last year. I, I'd say, but I think you write that one there. Let's, we gotta put a four million there again too.
Well, that's what I thought.
Just as we saw with everybody else, just to see where we get.
I was gonna say four million. Sheriff. Eighteen, five. I know, Mark, you're not gonna like that number, but we, we could revisit this.
Whatever they were at last year.
We can revisit it.
Yeah, whatever they were at last year, let's just leave that alone.
It's about that eighteen five, so. Forty-seven change, but let's, let's put it eighteen five, and we know we're gonna have to come back to that. We've already made that promise to the sheriff. That that will be the one thing we're gonna have to monitor closely, because there's such a drastic change there.
So Commissioners, just so we're on the same page, last year, um, that's where the special needs committee, the sheriff's office actual spend was eighteen point five four seven. However, that twenty twenty-four actual included four hundred and thirty-six thousand in capital expenditures, so you would back that out, and they were at about eighteen point one, I think.
Right. But, and again, uh, you know, this isn't gonna make anybody happy. We know that. We, we've already discussed it, so. We come, we can always come back at it. Three months even down the road, you know what I'm saying? We just.
Hold them in favor of law enforcement, so go on.
Uh, the reporter, I thought a million. Trim off two twenty-seven.
I, I would say one point one.
All right.
Because that is a skinny department, has very few employees, there's nowhere to cut there. And one point one, she voluntarily brought it down to one point one seventy-five. They were one point oh five nine.
I didn't cut the corner. I thought the doc was pretty. Close to where you needed to be.
I agree.
But, but again, we'll look at it. Um, comma, please, we know that's at like six point nine million. Thanks to Judge Blue Door new trim.
No, no, comma, please, you're.
That's different.
Or I'm sorry, um, domestic rela, uh, domestic court.
They asked for.
Right.
Right where they needed to be, and we don't, and we, we wouldn't touch, they did exactly out of the gate what they.
So, can you give us that number so we can update that spreadsheet? Six point nine, you said?
Six point nine?
No, no, no.
No, no.
You're.
No, no, the domestic.
Domestic relations.
Comment, please.
Five point one six five.
That I did not. Do anything with you.
I wouldn't touch that either.
Okay.
Five one six five, you said?
Oh, four eight.
Oh, four eight?
Yes.
Probate, I didn't do anything with that. Do you have any other?
Wait, domestic, you, you did go to domestic and do something.
No, that should be next.
Yeah, well, Judge already did.
He did five, maybe four. So we saw my pay.
What?
Domestic.
Domestic.
Yeah.
He was at six point nine, right?
He was a six eight.
He was at six. Okay, so the original domestic relationship that our court asked was seven point five. Then it went down to six point six, but you saw Commissioner's trust. Then the last meeting, we had it at seven point three two.
Yeah, but he trimmed off, Alex, we're at the.
From his original ask at seven point five, he took seven hundred thousand.
Right, so we're at six eight nine five, say.
Six eight nine?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's make it six eight flat. Let's make it, let's make it six eight flat.
Six eight flat. I just wanna make sure I put in there the number three, okay?
Um.
So six point eight flat, correct? So now we're on probate.
I didn't do anything with probate. I don't know what you wanna do with that.
I think two point fours. Okay, because that's just about where they were last year, and it was a couple hundred thousand less than. What was requested.
County courts. Oh, I'm sorry, clerk of courts.
Clerk of courts.
Courts, I, I estimated a million. Randy ain't gonna like to hear that, but that's three hundred thousand. Just to see where we're at. Unless you wanna bump that one point two.
Well, he's got some extra money there too, though. He could use. In that other month. I know he had a month.
You wanna, you wanna hit it at a million and then come back?
Yeah, see where we're at.
County courts, I didn't, I didn't do anything with that. I don't know where you wanna be.
Yeah, so one point three, and there was an offer of county courts to save money. And then the judge last week went and reclassified everybody, so we couldn't do that move to save money, put them under clerk of courts. I thought that was pretty unethical to do that, but. I'd say one three.
Okay. In that's a bull. I kept them the same, but I don't, you know, I don't know where.
Yeah, keep them at five.
Order of elections. A million, I hit it at a million.
I agree. Eighty-five is what we stuck on was the average statewide from the last week.
What did they, what did they spend last year?
Well, presidential. Two point, two point.
What did they spend the year before that then?
One point seven. Yeah, so last year was the presidential year, and I was at two point one six five. And I have to go back to previous spreadsheets to see what their actual spend was in twenty twenty-three.
Well, you know, Mr. Alberini has already made it clear that he's coming back, so. At a million. You start there. See where we're at. We can always, we can always raise.
You have fifty percent of the budget.
But I think.
Is that realistic? I mean, I'm just saying. I, 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 I think it needs to be cut, but. You know, if you're slashing fifty percent, that's over fifty percent of the budget, that's.
They're gonna come back. We know they're all gonna come back, and then we're gonna see where we're at. This, this isn't gonna be a done deal, that's for sure.
Let's, let's go at least one point two.
One point two, okay. I'll agree to that.
See where we're at.
We did. Establish there are some things there, there are cost-saving measures. And I'll put on the table, we're the only county that's paying them health coverage to go to one meeting a month, and no other counties do that. And, uh, I was shocked when we were at the meeting, went around the meeting, and then everyone thought we were, Trump County was crazy. Like, how rich are you that you're paying your board members health coverage, which?
Well, I had, you need to look into that because I haven't had a chance.
Right, but we need to pull the journal actually, where we gave it to them, because the Secretary of State sets salary. That we pay on our budget, but there's nothing there about health coverage, and the Secretary of State's edict there. And all these other counties said they don't. Columbia County said they did, and they took it away a couple of years ago, and they took it away from Board Authority and just.
And I was gonna ask Prosecutor's Office in a meeting discussing that, um. It was said that. The, any new hires. Would, if, if we made a resolution and voted on a resolution. Any new hires. would be exempt, but any, I don't know if the current members are grandfathered in. That's, that's gonna be Commissioner, that, that's what I had discussed with CCAO.
You mean with their new term when they come in or?
In other words, anyone, i- i- if the Commissioners choose to vote on a resolution to not offer the Board of Election members health insurance.
Not the regular workers, just the board members.
The board members, yes, just, just the board members that are attending one meeting a month. But the current board members may be grandfathered in. Until they're voted out or until, you know, until their term is up. We ma-, we're proud to look into that.
Commissioners, uh, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, the one thing I wanna just mention is that there is some history to this in Trumbull County. In around two thousand ten, there was actually a lawsuit between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Elections on this. And, uh, actually I have somebody in our office right now trying to pull, believe it or not, that was even before my time, uh, in the civil division, so. I'm trying to pull the file on that to see, the one thing I can tell you for sure is that because it was a lawsuit between two clients, both the Board of Elections and Board of Commissioners had outside counsel in that case. But I'm trying to get the court, a copy of the court pleadings and see what was resolved in that, because I don't know if there was any long-term court order that would affect how this could work, uh, because I wouldn't wanna see you guys get into any other new dispute with the Board of Elections over it, so.
Absolutely, we would not want to.
I'm in the process of trying to gather that information to be able to give it to, uh, you guys and, and obviously, anything that I'm pulling from the clerk's office would be also public information that the Board of Elections would have access to, uh, so that way at least maybe both of you guys could see it and maybe hopefully short-circuit any other lawsuit that would cost attorney's fees for, you know, to public boards again, so, uh, we're working on gathering that.
And I agree, that's why we kind of cautioning the board, there is more research that needs to be done. Sometimes it's okay to say, let us take it offline and get you all the informed facts before you go making any statements or cuts or whatever. Let us work on that, because we do know there has been some contention.
Oh, absolutely. We would not do anything without, you know.
Sure.
You looking into it and letting, guiding us.
That's not gonna get us to where we need to be right now.
No, no.
No, but it's.
We're, we're bringing up a discussion.
I get it, but we do need to kinda try to.
And I think the public would be a little bit that they're paying the hundred grand for health coverage for people to attend one meeting a month.
If they are, Commissioner, if they are, and if there is no equal authority that says that we have, it might have been a court rule. We have to look at those things. We know that this existed in the past, so let us look at that. If something's court mandated, it doesn't matter what the hell, but no offense, but I mean, it's court mandated, it's court mandated, we gotta do what we gotta do.
Right.
Okay, so.
Okay, I didn't want, I didn't mean to throw a wrench into this, it just, well, Commissioner, he brought it up.
Well, he was brought up at the meeting the other day and we were shocked, I think the three of us were shocked and involved when we asked around and Columbia was the last one that hadn't done that, and he said, we took that away a couple of years ago, it was a waste.
And the bottom line Commissioners, you know, we all agree, I think we agree on this. If it, I mean, we're looking for ways to keep this county moving in a positive direction without layoffs, but we must keep the taxpayers' money. And we have to deal with it on a, you know, on a, a level that, what we have to work with at the moment, so, um. We have.
And we, and we would love to, we don't even know. We could assume that there's at least one board member that already has insurance, their husband is a county employee, the other three, you know, I, I don't know, I don't think, we would assume they take advantage of it or maybe not, I don't know.
Um, Commissioner, so I'm so sorry, but where, where did you?
Planning, we're on planning commission.
I just didn't catch the number that you decided.
So one point two.
Okay.
I thought, this is me, one Commissioner, that Julie Green brought up, uh, I think the planning commission does a lot of work. Uh, and brings a lot of money into the county. I believe that figure at nine, like, twenty-six was reasonable, or nine twenty-five? We could cut it.
That's one where I would like to be nine fifty, go a little more, because they are, are chosen economic development arm of this board of Commissioners. And I don't wanna cripple our economic development team in any way when we have things, so many things that are happening that we have boots on the ground right now economically in the trenches and then we need to have air support with this, I mean, for us to back off on our economic team makes absolutely no sense, and that is what's gonna grow our economy, so we have more money to pay everybody else.
I don't disagree with that.
Why would you give them twenty-five thousand dollars for what, what they requested?
It's not, that's what we put them at, but they requested one point one three five.
No, they actually came down, Dan, a Commissioner, to nine twenty-six. That's why I said.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, that's why.
So let's make them nine hundred.
Let's give them nine twenty-six, if that's what they said they need.
Okay.
They were cutting everybody, you can't get them more.
We could, we could do that, we could revisit it if we, you know, we had the money. Uh, general fund departments, Alex, probably know more about this.
So, Commissioners, I, I, I'm really concerned about this one specifically. Um, just because this is literally, um, all general fund departments, this goes to how to, towards utilities, towards, including your jail, this goes towards, and you can see that it was budgeted in twenty twenty-four at two hundred and ninety-two thousand, right? That's how much it was awarded.
So let's keep it at four hundred then.
And then, oh.
Let's keep it at four hundred and, and see where.
What, what do you say that, two ninety-two?
Well, she doesn't, I can't, my spreadsheet won't go up there for some reason, I have it right here, but she can't. Molly, can you unhide the columns between R and S, please? And S, thank you so much, and then if we unhide those, you'll be, he'll be able to see it.
Oh, you said unhide or hide?
Unhide. Okay, maybe it's between S and, there it is, okay, so scroll down for me. Yep, oh, wait, um, right here. That two ninety-two right there, Commissioner, that's what the twenty twenty-four award was. This is what we actually spent. And I believe that. Well, yeah, because all of your, so trash, utilities, again, this is for everything for general fund departments. Your jail alone, you would be in awe of how much money goes into providing utilities for that jail. You have to, you're building, you're obligated.
So those utilities aren't included in, or one thousand?
There's certain ones that are, there's certain ones that are, so you gotta go down by the line.
But we know where we were last year, you're not gonna see any, I don't think it's gonna. It's not gonna go down. We're gonna revisit it, I, I mean, you can always cut it, but I mean. I'd say four hundred, keep it the same right now. So close. CSCE, I believe, they, they, their grant are hinged on. Didn't they, weren't they hinged on the amounts, CSCE?
Do you think we got it four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And you left planning commission at nine three. All right, going back to CSCE, I think they gave up, I'm gonna go back to what they gave us, is what they could bottom line operate on, and I believe that that can find it.
Are they the ones to get, to grant matches?
Yeah, so. Federal thirty-four percent local or, uh, state match, so.
Cut them way back, they're not gonna, they're not gonna match those.
You got it. You are one hundred percent correct. Let me find what their number was.
My mind is still working a little bit.
Sure, no, I believe it. And there's no dumb questions, we're all, we're all in this together, right? JFS had given us a specific breakdown of what they specifically needed to still keep the match and be able to operate. Thought it'd somewhere, I don't. Yeah, I mean, I know.
That's where we went to the five hundred.
I believe that's what that was, but I wanna be sure.
I mean, we don't have.
Oh, here we go, I'm so sorry. Breakdown, all right, let me find the email from Alita.
Well, we don't have to touch it, I think they, they, they had a presentation.
They did.
That, at the end of the meeting, where she was pretty adamant about the amount of monies that they bring in from that, that number. So maybe we should just keep it there right now. Commissioners, you know, and see where we're at.
Yep.
Five hundreds?
Yep.
Dog kennel.
Oh. And of course, Commissioners, I'm so sorry, it was a paper that I had sitting right in front of me. Um, CY twenty twenty-four Commissioners authorized four hundred seventy-five thousand for C O C A. Based on the cost increases in historical data, JFS projected the need for at least five hundred thousand, so that's where we got five hundred thousand.
So twenty-five thousand over there. Crazy, sure. Dog kennel, two hundred, one rounded ask, it's only thirty grand, I hate doing it to them. For what they.
How did, how did they operate actually on one ten last year? I don't understand, that was the, the big difference.
Um, I have not been able to figure that out, to be honest with you. Uh, she did give me her breakdown of her budget.
Yeah, I have it for you.
In one second. I'm not sure, uh, they do have revenue that comes in. So they have revenue that comes in that does, that's not general fund, and they use that as ob-, obviously offset. And then this is above the beyond, same as nine one one, so. This is an additional ask on top of what they have out of their dedicated funds that aren't general fund. Okay, so the dog kennel, uh, what she gave me on the twenty twenty-five budget report was a two hundred and sixty thousand initial ask, um, it looks like she'd be anticipating three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in employee costs. Fifty thousand opers, a hundred and thirty thousand hospital, so ultimately to a lot of.
Commissioners, well, the math is going on behind the scenes here, just a, an update, Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office. Um, I got word from the Board of Elections Director, according to what she is saying, none of the Board of Elections members are actually on the county's health insurance, the, the four board members themselves. Now, I don't know if that's because they've chosen not to take it, or if it's because they, you know, haven't had it in the past, I don't know, but just wanted to update you.
And that's why I wanted to make sure.
Now, maybe a good time then, if they're not eliminated now, just so as not confuse them, future boards coming in.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure we looked at that before we.
I would agree with that.
Yep, um, so the only thing that I can say is the increase from her budget submitted last year, twenty twenty-four, I don't know. Was five hundred and seventy-three thousand, the dog kennel expended five hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars. She was anticipating a twenty twenty-five expenditure of six hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-five, which is a difference of seventy-five thousand dollars, so that's where I'm not. I, I'm not understanding how we went from one ten to two.
Well, let, let's make it two hundred, then, because seventy-five on top of one ten would be one eighty-five.
See, that's about what I thought.
Absolutely, yeah.
Two hundred, yeah.
Unless there's something, you know, that's not reflective in the spreadsheet or that we don't know, then that could be the case, and it's always that, so. Spreadsheet only gives you a certain lacks contextual data.
Think we should leave nine one one where it is. Just because, uh, you know, with the disparity going on there.
It's like the sheriff you just got.
Well, the other thing too is we are mandated, they get more employees unless overtime in that department, if they're hiring another one next week. We, we don't wanna stop the progress, they're way under a, a plan that we paid a quarter million dollars to approve is telling us what we need to do, we can't disregard that.
Transportation Improvement District, I don't even know.
That's, we're gonna keep that, that's just, that's.
Soil Conservation.
We're gonna keep that, too, it's one of the state things that the farmers rely on, we can't cut that back.
Okay, here we are, Metro Parks. Now, we have skipped over this, Metro Parks was supposed to show today, they did not. We have an issue with the dam, we know that. However, I'm only one Commissioner, Commissioner, I do feel that we should fund them, but I feel that they need to be cut like everyone else, just to get them through a certain period of time to where we can negotiate with what we have going on with other situations, I'm gonna say, other issues. Uh, with that being said.
Well, they are playing a tactic where they have reached out to many boards, including the disc, Frisbee Disc people. To try to scare them that they're shutting the parks down and putting a rocket from the entrance to this, that, I don't like those tactics at all, we're not gonna be bullied by fear tactics with the, with the taxpayers at all, anyway, should reform. But I agree what you're saying, I agree the direction you're heading with this thing.
I.
Where I think they're going.
I believe that we should give like sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars to keep them moving until we see what this thing looks like.
I agree a hundred percent with you, I, I, I think the dam and funding the parks are two separate issues.
Yep, let's look at, Alex, what is, what is the direct executive director's salary?
And keep in mind, I think they carried out.
If we only give them sixty or seventy, you know, that's not important at this point.
Well, I wanna make sure we give them enough for at least a half a year, then we can reevaluate in the next half. But I wanna make sure we give them enough of that, and it doesn't say, I can't mow grass and we got trash overflowing, they use that as a tactic that, you know, I don't wanna say, well, we still have to shut down, I'm still here, but we're shutting everything else down.
And I wanna thank you for agreeing, Commissioner, cause I know you've been through a lot of hassle with them. And Commissioner Bernard and I came into it, we haven't really experienced it, but we understand it, however, it's just probably not right at this point to totally absolve them, you know what I'm saying? So, um, I think they can operate on that, like you said, Commissioner, for at least six months, and I think they carried forty-five, I think they had like forty-five thousand. If, I, I may be mistaken, but I think they had shown forty-five or fifty grand available through March. Or through.
Well, that's what, that's the quarter of a year what we gave them, I think they only had like seven thousand a hand or something like that.
Yeah.
Well, that's all they had left.
And I think that's why they were panicking, they were, they wanted to know what's.
I just don't want them to keep spending money on attorney fees to fight the taxpayers and, you know, do the job he's paid to do and do what the public wants.
When they see that we're funding them, that, that will get them back to the table, so start discussion again.
Right.
And that's all, kind of work this.
But like you said, fund them enough to get them through a half a year and then you can readdress that.
So if we give twenty-five, what did we give, twenty-five originally?
So Commissioners, just to go back to your question, the salary for the executive director there is forty-five thousand. You also need to remember, just saying, not this board, but before you, I vividly remember the board approving additional money so that you could have a part-time who replaced Missy Savela.
And she's been handling those duties and handle them okay, what they're doing.
So she's no longer there?
No, she quit already, they hired somebody else, she quit, and then he handled it, he's been able to handle it.
What do you wanna give, sixty, seventy, what do you wanna give?
Let's get, let's.
We already got, well, we're already in a quarter, so I think that's even longer, we already got a quarter of it paid that we already covered out of the the budget that's already been there, been spent, been done, so that salary for the rest of the year is.
See, they request. Well, they, they originally asked for one thirty-six, it's right down to one fifteen. If you, if you're at fifty percent, you're at seventy grand from their original ask. You know, I.
I like sixty better.
What do you wanna do?
Sixty-five.
That's the number, okay.
I think sixty-five.
That's what you call call.
That's called, uh, that's called dealing in the card business.
You gotta have a little laughter, yeah, a little laughter.
Well, you were elected for your skills.
Yeah.
Negotiating.
And lets them know that, you know, the parks can go on.
Yeah, and I don't wanna see with that sixty-five any word or anyone else being calling here saying that they were told by a board member of this that we're shutting the Frisbee tournaments down, cancel your tournaments. Uh, you know, I don't wanna hear any of that stuff, there's enough for them to get by and operate, and if they, if they make that next move, then we gotta make a move again, but as of right now, all ma-, all services should be maintained.
I think we just gotta go positive, let's, let's forget the negative, go positive, and hopefully we can.
I think we could work together from here.
Yep.
I really do.
Hopefully.
Okay, so we're moving on to Trumbull Neighborhood Partners, that's really nothing there.
They need that for the grant matching grant.
Belly Vision. What do we wanna do there?
That's done, I mean, that's.
It's already worked.
All right, Hydril, I got a recommendation on Hydril, the hundred grand there. Made a commitment, they got matching funds from the feds on this, the, for the aquatic, um, invasive vegetation, mosquito lake, which was affecting tourism and the economy with that. I'd say we would take that hundred thousand out of there. The two million fund that we got from Karen, we're gonna put some toward the sheriff with the evidence room and things that they needed there. We talked about consultant, things special, special, since this is a special, just a. We talked about consultant, things special, something special, since this is a special, just a special thing which will affect the whole. Lake region, so important, I'd say we take the hundred thousand out of that two million. And then free it up in the budget, cause it's not really a budgeted item, then we got one more year of commitment, then that's gone.
I got no problem with that.
So will it be one point nine?
So it'll be zero.
Well, it'll be zero there, but the two million will be one point nine.
Okay, I don't disagree with that.
And I think that's, that's a respectful way to use that of a, something that's gonna. Help, do the health of the environment and maintain tourism in the county without having a, a sad drill to come back and bite us.
And that's a huge effect for these thousand people that use. Fish lake, and if we don't take care of that, it's gonna cost you a lot more than.
It's gonna cost us millions, food, and hundreds of thousands now, millions later if we don't maintain it, and we worked awful hard. To get the funds from our congressman in D C to mitigate that.
Historical Society.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, my name, you just don't wanna bring it to you, it's, should you choose any regular public meeting to do that. You do need to make a resolution that you wanna pay out of that dedicated fund for Hydril, and that's your okay.
Sure.
Historical Society, there's really, that's, that will make or break us, really, huh?
We gotta let, we gotta let them be able to operate, they are doing a lot there last year.
Fair Board, we brought them down.
I mean, we would have to maintain at least that, I hate that that's an area we cut, cause I, I, there may be great strides out there, and that's something. Guess we cross our fingers and hope for no rain, they can have a really good income here this year and.
And, and hopefully by the time the fair comes, there's more money available from the.
And they have come to us, like when they had power poles needed fixed, adjusted, when they had lecture, and we did. Assist them on, on top of what we budgeted for them last year, and I hope we can either do the same for that.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'll. Keep that there.
So now.
Ohio State Co-op.
Ohio State, what's the state number there?
We're at that now.
Ohio State Co-op?
Yeah, that's, that's our extension service, that's all the four age kids, we just put a ton of money in the. Into, uh. What they do there, and again, that's, that's assisting a lot of farmers in the county too.
Leave that there.
Yeah.
Where are we at, Alex? So, wait, see, we have one more down, hello?
So.
Time to see where we're at.
So, do you want me to put the one point nine, uh, instead of the two million?
No.
Well, and actually, the two million, we need to cross out, cause we crossed it out on top, correct?
I, I got it.
Oh, she's, yeah, I'll just.
Okay, so Commissioners, you are at sixty-five, seven, three, five, four, seven, one.
So, closer.
You are under.
We're under by.
Nine hundred, you are at nine hundred, you're under by nine hundred and forty-five thousand, yes.
Sixty, no, we only have sixty-four.
You, oh. You're right.
Yeah, we only have sixty-four.
I have to change that for wings. Actually, you are at, again, sixty-five, seven, three, five, you have sixty-four, so some reason my value isn't working, I'll just do my calculator. Yeah.
Present, one point five. Yeah.
Four, six, eight, one, one oh eight, three, six. Sorry, I made. Sorry. One point seven four, all right, one point oh five four, three, six, three, one four. One thousand, one million, zero, five, four. Three, six, three, point four zero.
Zero, five, four, so one million off.
Yep.
Cause of what, do we can't see it?
Oh, no, did.
She can't get my spreadsheet out there, so I have my own numbers that I. Sorry.
Right, so give her those numbers so she can type it in.
Yeah, I can, well, no, it doesn't work, I just put formulas, give me a sec, I'll do. I mean, I could do the formulas.
Okay, so here's what I need you to do, Molly, go up to the top column, and I'm gonna have you put those numbers in. So you gotta put those exact numbers in right here.
I can't see that.
Okay, so I'm gonna tell you, can you go to thirty-nine, line thirty-nine, M. Thirty-nine, M, two more down. One, two, there you go, put in seven, four, zero, zero, nine, zero. Point zero, zero. Go down, put in six, zero, five, nine, three. Point one nine, point one zero, sorry. Go ahead and go down, sixty thousand. That one's easy. Third, three, six, six.
Is it the same ones that are in the.
Yeah, can we, I think they didn't change anything, can we copy and paste?
Actually, once you get rid of that, like ten cents and thirty cents, so that doesn't. Just use.
Well, everything matters. You want me, you want us to, we'll do whatever you say, but, I mean, it's money.
I'll kick in the extra ninety cents.
You want this to go over here?
So, then I would just like you to auto sum, not just to be safe, so equal sum. Thank you, perfect, okay, and then let's make sure we summed up this next column, right here, so we need to auto sum this one right here. Perfect. Let me make sure my numbers match your numbers.
You should have fifty-eight, one, two, eight, zero, seven, zero, point, three, two.
No, fifty-eight, four, four, oh, four, eight, thirty-one.
All right, something, I'll check yours against mine here in a minute, let's go back down, let's finish this one, let's auto sum that one.
Do you want me to auto sum it at the subtotal?
I want all of these numbers.
The whole thing, starting here?
No, no, just this column here.
Where do you want it to auto sum at, is what I'm asking you.
So, from oh, 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 six through clerk of courts.
Where do you want the answer to be?
Where's this?
I understand where you want it to start, but I wanna know where the answer is going, it's a subtotal or the total appropriation?
No, subtotal.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Four, four, seven, nine, seven, nine, three, three.
We're good there, we just don't know what it was, okay, and then, now we're gonna sum up this total, so we're gonna sum up all three buckets together.
Okay.
So we're gonna do line forty-five.
Right, I, I see.
Thanks, Molly, I know it's hard to work based off of. You did wonderful. And then just that last bucket. Thank you so much, and then, what we're gonna do is right here, on, so one more down.
Can you point to it again, cause I.
Yeah, like it's, um, eighty-four, I think, we're gonna take equal sum. This six.
Eighty-six, are you sure it's eighty-four?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, that's fine.
Eighty-six, okay, so you're.
Uh, we're gonna do a formula, not auto sum. So we're gonna do equal sum. And then just type in S U M. Okay, then you're gonna click on cell eighty-four, this sixty-six, one, seven, eight, oh, wait.
Okay, what do you, I'm sorry, what did you sure, and go there?
So we're gonna take the sixty-six divided by what we have available up top, so that way you can see, yeah, subtract, sorry, so, uh, you can see the difference. That's where we got all these numbers down here.
Okay, so you need. Which one?
Um, it's gonna be all the way up in the left-hand corner, this number here.
Sixty-four.
We're, we're, we're gonna fix that, just give me one second, guys, let's, let her, yeah.
The sixty-six one?
Yes, we're gonna do two numbers so they can see.
And then this one right here?
Yes, minus. Thank you, oh, we missed, I think, yeah. No. So what, I just do equal sum, then I click that minus that, but whatever way works.
Some.
Mm-hmm, then I do my parentheses. And then I do click the one right above it. Mm-hmm, and then minus. And then I go all the way up and highlight the cell up there.
I think you guys are gonna X L one-on-one.
I wouldn't know where the heck I was at.
So.
Tony, did you learn this in high school?
Oh, you're okay. You're doing great. Okay, and then we gotta close our parentheses. And then hit enter. All right, now, we're gonna take another number, so right in that number, give me one space down below where you're at. Okay, um, I'm sorry, Molly, we're gonna have to insert. One more column, between eighty and eighty and eighty-nine.
A column or a row?
A row, thank you.
Between eighty-eight and eighty-nine, you want one?
Yes, please. All right, wonderful, so let's go back up one more. And I'm sorry, do me a huge, I'm so sorry, go back up to the left-hand corner. Take this minus two million, so go right below that, let's put sixty-four, six, eight, one. Comma, one oh eight, point three, six. Okay. And we're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna go back down. And we're gonna take. The number that we ended up with, so we're gonna do right in this one, so eighty, go down, one, two. Perfect, so equal sum. Parenthesis, the sixty-six, one, seven, eight. One, four, nine. Or you could just click on the cell, whatever makes your life easier. So like, click on the, yep, okay, minus, and then we're gonna go back up to the sixty-four number. Right there, yep, and then close our parentheses and hit enter. There you go. So we're still up one, four, nine, seven.
Almost one point five. That's what we have from clerk of courts. But how do you replace it?
Molly, thank you for that. No problem.
Wait, that's, that's wrong.
Are, are the, are the number, are the cells out of order on that?
Yeah.
Did we do, did we do the two numbers backward, the subtraction, did we do it backwards?
Which ones?
I, I'm not, the, the, in the, in the totals there, would we go up to the, would we subtract the?
Oh.
Did we, so should we be taking the, the actual expected revenue minus the?
Minus, yeah.
Okay, maybe, I don't remember how they were entered.
Let me do it online, so I know, cause she's just do, she's trying to do it, and that's.
I.
I'm trying to do it how somebody's telling me.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Which pointing to a tree that I can't see.
So she can't see what I, I know, so she's all bringing off of, yeah.
I was kind of impressed that she was picking up what you were putting down, cause I was.
No, she did great, but she can't see what I see, what we see.
She's like, and go here. Absolutely, I'll go there.
You gotta have your little, you gotta have your own screen.
Well, I have the screen here, it's really small. But it doesn't, it doesn't show me what's.
She'll be like a weatherman, where she's looking at the.
It's like the green.
Yeah, looking at the thing where she's looking at a water.
Maybe, maybe, smaller for my tea, if anybody's listening. You're a jack of all trades.
You ever done the weather yet?
Oh, please don't put me on the news. Wait.
What channel?
Yeah.
Did Zach send you? Yeah, I email, right. He keeps calling, what do you got going, what do you got going? So I just sent out a press release.
And of course, I ran it even differently.
Where's Stan Bunny, he was supposed to be here. He must have, uh, something important going on. Hope you can see it, the recording.
And I gotta figure out where our numbers are all.
Well, um.
I mean, we can't do nothing, right, right?
You know, if you wanna send me that updated sheet off somewhere without.
Yeah, let me do that, is that where?
We are doing it right, I'm just saying, to some.
I have my email open, I'll just, you know.
So the column does. Must.
All right, Molly, should be coming right.
Save. I know. All right. Down the train, right? Everything. Oh, it looks different, all right. Oh, I have to download it, that's why.
I'm doing it, okay. Hold on. Yeah, maybe I had to save it again. Or just begin on my laptop, I'm sorry. Maybe it was counting bugs, I was saying. Okay, Molly, this should be good. Try the next one. Stand it just to be safe.
F I I, that was not a spam from talking about the checks.
There it is, so it's just over in that column, oh. So we have the three point one, two. Oh, I see what it is, sorry, Molly. Back up the top. See that one point nine? Um, actually, two, zero, three, zero. Two, seven hundred. Okay. We're good there. So. At the sixty-five million, eight, six, six. You are over by eight hundred and fourteen, nine, three, six, and then we just lost sixty-four million, hold on. And that formula is right, go on, check it, it's the top minus the bottom.
Okay.
So at the end, so.
Well, no, because really you're at sixty-four, so we have to figure that out. Okay, so then we're gonna take the sixty-five. That you figure out. Oh, no, no, I'm just making sure that.
Oh, this, this off the road.
I think, yeah, E, it should be, what, E thirty-five?
E thirty-five, yeah.
Minus.
E, Pope, back.
I don't know.
E thirty-five, it should be E thirty-five minus O E three.
Oh.
I'll do the math, so.
Oh, is there a space in that number now?
There must be a space.
Or a period, there's, or, no, there's two periods, I'll do it.
There you go.
Wait.
Now we should be, uh, wait.
Wait. Something, right?
Why don't we just format it to be a number, maybe, if we do the right click? Just to be safe.
There, there's a, too many commas now, too.
That should be right.
No, that's right, you're good, you're good. There you go. So we're one point one eight five, over the sixty-four. Thank you, Molly, very much.
Oh, I can't keep cutting. Let's shoot, well, I hate to say it, nine one one, five hundred, and then. Nine one one, five hundred, and then funded. I don't know, we're, you know. But how are we gonna make up one point? Or should we have the auditor find more money?
Do you want to go back through and look at everything again and see if any areas that you didn't cut, you wanna revisit? Just.
The only ones you could really.
So anything that was in red was areas you cut, just.
Well, here's, here's something, I mean, I know there's certain, well, we have the mandate, but. Veteran Services spent one point four last year. We got them to six hundred thousand more. And I know that we, they can get with the inside millage stuff, but. We're giving them six hundred thousand more, and they haven't really. Said to us what they're gonna spend that on. Or that they're even gonna spend that, instead of them giving money back at the end of the year like they traditionally have. Is there a way we can adjust that a little bit?
I, I think we need to talk to them before we cut the veterans.
I mean, haven't we talked to everybody and said they'd cut back, and that's, they're still with their original ass?
I mean, yeah, but I mean, you could go through, I mean.
Commissioner, there's a reason why they ask, again, I'm just gonna give you a reason in the paper, but I do think that that is at all my place, this is up to you guys.
I think they're, I think they're right, they're getting another billion, taking people to Cleveland.
Um, so where we requested, what we requested last year was one seven four one, three six zero. What they had appropriated thus far when they submitted this was one point two. With the increase of mileage for Trumbull County in twenty twenty five, we're looking forward to expanding our footprint. Um, each year ODVS applies us a reported amount of funds. The number has continued to increase every year, the numbers for twenty twenty three were a hundred twenty dollars to one county dollar. Long story short, this year we plan on capital outlet purchase of an SUV for transporting veterans to the Cleveland area. When we have a smaller number of individuals. The twenty twenty five budget includes costs for maintaining the Veterans Memorial, which is a project that was started by an organization that raised funds to build the Memorial two thousand and seven. And the capital outlet, um. So technically, the allowable request of point five mil is two point four one eight, they're asking for two point zero two six. Why did we not update that? So let's update that. But it's, I mean, it's only four thousand dollars less, but still.
That's still six hundred thousand more for a van and upkeep portal.
Well, I, I think the board of commissioners.
Doesn't cost half a million dollars, so.
Maybe the board commissioners, and, and, and somebody can reach out, as you've done with other judges and elected officials, and ask if they could.
Well.
Go down to two point nine, I don't know.
If we did. We still could fund them later. Right?
Well, they could, we, they have, if they say we want the two point four one, you gotta give, like.
Oh, so there, we gotta get, that's mandated, give them what they want, well, that's pretty good.
Because they can ask for up to two point.
Let's readjust our inside village.
That's not.
Stuff.
So. Those are untouchable.
But a lot of times, people will work together. If you ask.
Yeah, let's see, let's ask.
I think it's worth an ask.
I'll, I'll call.
Now, let me give, let me do you a hypothetical situation, if they were to go down to one point nine. I'm just throwing this out there. I'm, see the band is certain verse. Use it. Thanks Molly, one nine, right here, you got it. Perfect, and then we'll go down. So that takes your, that takes your original sound to one point oh five four.
That's what we, yeah.
Well. Now you are, no, you are at one four.
I mean, there's some essential posters with that, that. They're on a two million dollar budget, which is. More than our recorder, more than our coroner, more than, or, more than clerk records, more than county courts. Uh, and more than board of elections, and, and I mean, there are a handful of employees, they're almost as much as. Where we got the auditor now with a staff of forty.
I think that's what they do.
It's the service they.
That's the service they provide, I mean, you know. I don't wanna cut this veteran service at all, anything I wanna increase. I, I.
No, what you do is call. Ask a question.
You know, when we look at this, I, I know you guys probably don't wanna hear this, but. I think we have to do something with the planning commission, if we've cut everybody, cut the prosecutor's office, but yeah, we're not gonna cut the. Planning commission, I think we need to affect it a little bit.
I, I do, Tony, can, have you been over there and see what those guys do? But they did work for every township, every zoning in the county, every township is working. There, there isn't an employee that's expendable there.
They have to cut everybody else another million.
But just because we gotta cut everybody else doesn't mean that, this is our economic goal, that's like saying. Yeah, this person holds our checkbook, let's get rid of, let's cut them, and then we have access, don't even access our check.
The only place we could really cut a lot of meat. It's out of the courts.
You're not gonna do that, because they're, they're not gonna let you. Okay. Well, you know, you guys can do whatever you wanna do, but if we're gonna be fair, we're gonna have to cut everybody, and I think we have to cut them.
I mean, they're under a million dollars, so it's, it's, that's, that's.
Maybe they have to go on a, a, a different work schedule. I, 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 I don't know, I mean.
I, I don't think.
I know, I know, I'm the auditor, and, and, and everybody else, and.
But what do you suggest, like twenty five thousand?
Every grant, every grant. Mister Chairman, every grant that we get in this county for every water line that we, everything we do.
I, I know, I.
Originates through there.
I, I, I. And I would agree with that, but what, what would you, if you do?
I, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, you know.
Because there's not a whole lot there.
If we're gonna be fair, we have to be fair to everybody across the board. You know, law enforcement, I mean, that's where I draw the line, nine one one, I draw the line, but.
But making money for the county to pay for law enforcement stuff, you don't draw the line.
No, 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 Danny, you know what, no.
Well, this is our grant writing section.
But, but if we cut down a little bit, that's not gonna hamper it for us, it's everybody else to cut that back, and then you wanna keep them at full service, that just doesn't make good sense.
It, it's not a full service, when you look at what they requested, and what, what they do and what they have. They're working within the means of what they have, they were eight ninety eight last year, they get a slight increase, they did bring an employee last year, replace one, midstream with Zach. Uh, who's essential.
You wanna cut twenty five thousand?
You're asking me my opinion, I'm giving, do whatever you want.
Well, listen, I, I'm, I, I understand what the commissioner's saying, and I, and I do know, it, listen, I know what the planning commission does, they do a phenomenal job with their grants and. All the economic development that's going on, we wouldn't have a lot coming. In Trumbull County without them being there to oversee all that, but. I understand what Commissioner Bernard's saying, if everybody's cutting, I mean. And I get that, but, you know, how do you cut them?
And then maybe we can look at it down the road, I mean, we're asking everybody else.
Well, that's, I, I, yep, and I, and I would agree with that, so, I'm, I'm trying to come up with a number that we would. That we would do that, you know, would we, would it be?
Stick another fifty off and see what we're at, yeah. I think that's.
I don't think they can operate eight seventy five, not, not, it'd be any service.
Could they for three months? Or six months, or? You know what I'm saying, Commissioner, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, if we do. I hate to do it to them, but we're doing it to everyone, we revisit it. And they come at us and say, hey, listen.
I don't wanna cut anybody, though.
I don't wanna cut nobody.
We're gonna ask.
This is the hardest thing there is to do. And nobody's gonna like it, but we, we, the, the idea is, is that they could revisit it. With us. And when the money's there.
We just had to, you know, the domestic judge over there cut. Seven, eight hundred thousand dollars off.
I don't know, but six point six million dollar budget, not out of an eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar budget.
But he took back wages, and, and he, and he did things that, that most people wouldn't do, and I just think we have to, you know, we have to cut, we have to ask everybody to.
What, um?
We gotta cut back.
They, they're at nine twenty five. You cut fifty.
We had, we had your thousand.
We had nine hundred?
Yeah, we cut twenty five off, so we cut another fifty off.
I promise, I, I believe that between Molly and I. Between Molly and I, we've got the right numbers that you set in there.
Oh, cuz this, this shows nine twenty six.
Yeah, we took it down.
We took it down even further, I'm sure, after that.
Oh, do we take it tonight?
Yes.
I think taking down nine maintains the service we had last year without having to. Say, no, you, we can't get sewer extension grants for these people.
Commissioners, just real quick, you're looking at these three columns here, so last year they operated at eight ninety, and again, you know that there's raises, and there's been more projects, and then. Even one further over, they had asked for. Sorry Molly, here we go again, right, they had asked for eight hundred and twenty four thousand, twenty twenty four, they actually expended eight hundred and ninety eight thousand, and you currently have them at nine hundred thousand, just so you're clear on that.
But again, we're, we're gonna have to revisit all of this, that, we just gotta. Make a budget, finalize it, and. Wait for everybody to come.
I, I just think, when the direction we're going with Kimberly Clark and everything else coming here. I would rather cut, get rid of a whole department than even touch our planning commission, which is planning for a future, seriously.
I'm glad you said that, I'm not saying that.
I, I mean, what, what, these are the people that are pulling out the red carpet, we got jets coming up, we got tiffs coming up, we got. Uh, railroads need moved, we got, there's planning stuff in here that is way above our pay grade. That these people are essential to making sure this happens, there's, there's wetlands, uh, and things that they're working on right now. And grant money that's coming in to pay for a lot of it, and all, every, every department there operates on grants. That we match with our county funds, whether sewer, infrastructure, that's our, that's our nervous system of this county.
I think we're banging our heads, I think the auditor. They come up with a million extra. That we need. I think there's some money in the till.
But until they do that, we have, we have to bounce on what's there, that's the problem. And that's what they're telling me, that's what's there. Right, and they're not gonna do that.
I mean, uh.
You're. You're close, okay, you're a lot closer than you have. But again.
So that's me, it's gonna be really tough.
It is.
But it has to.
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, and you have to, you have to, you have to.
I mean, if we're gonna, rather than take money from the commission, even if we took a little bit. All five off of soil conservation, and twelve five off of. Co-op, to make that fifty, I'd rather do that than take it away from our economic development team.
You're just talking with organs to be about that.
I mean, I'm going by what Commissioner Roy's saying, I, I don't know a lot about. Those services, uh, if you, I mean. Commissioner Bernard, I don't know.
I, 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 I think we have to, you know, my original statement, I think you have to, you have to do it equally among everybody, to be fair.
Can we, can we take another twenty five, and then twelve five and twelve five, take twenty five more off of? Plane, I know you don't wanna take any commission. I hate to do it, but we could always revisit it and. Pump it, you know, to where we need to be, but can we take twenty five, and then twelve five and twelve five?
So you want, the one, let's start this soil conservation.
What if we went right down the board with twelve five off every department that we can take it off of, and see if that gets a million?
I wouldn't disagree with that.
Yeah, but, that's not being fair, if you touch a planning commission.
But you already cut them, yeah. Can be, so soil conservation, that's what we just started, they're at one seventy five, are you saying you should cut them down to one fifty, or you think?
I thought that was mandated, that's not mandated?
Nope, that's a request. You have not cut them at all, not saying you should, but I've heard you have talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, it frees, it frees up some, to start.
But we got eleven hundred farmers in this county, and that's all their property, we're touching that, those are the people that get them, their.
Okay.
Their FSA loans and their.
So do you wanna keep it at one seventy five? And then remember to, that's the key. Reiterating, have to, whatever you've cut down to, then has to be given back to these department heads, elected officials, and they then have to go find what line level. They're gonna cut these things from, so this is gonna take a partnership going forward.
I, I hate to say like nine one one, I think we need to take another hundred off of that. Maybe two, three? We're gonna give them four hundred thousand more, and you just said, why are you giving them more when the planning commission?
I thought you said we have to hire new people.
Right, they're two seven now.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's.
I, I thought you were gonna hire, I thought you were gonna hire.
Well, they are, but you know, it takes time for them to hire, and right now, I've been here two years, and we're still at a net gain of like one. And they've been trying to hire all along.
We do have a, uh, we, they, we do, we are presenting supervisor to start.
Many departments should be out there that are mandated.
Um, so. If you.
Number wise.
Let's.
What's the number of departments?
Alright, hold on, so here's what's non-mandated.
Do so.
Commissioners, auditor, treasurer, prosecutor, sheriff, reporter, coroner, comment please. Domestic relationship, now for probate, or reports that were at eleven. Sixteen, and then one. Sixteen plus twelve. So twenty eight. Twenty eight, that includes, again, the Hydrola, the Ohio State Co-op, the all the things.
Twenty eight times twelve, five is three hundred and fifty thousand, that doesn't even get you. That doesn't get you what it be. Eight times.
Twelve thousand five hundred, you're saying?
Yeah. Fifteen gets you to four twenty. It'd be thirty thousand.
Um. And again, commissioners, this is just something that. You know, learnings, um. One thing that you can do, I mean, I just want my main notes, because I. One thing that you can do is. You can get it to where you need to get it right now, and then something that I would suggest, it's completely up to the board commissioners, is set it now, if cuts and reevaluate quarterly. Track frequently to assess revenues coming in and expenses going out, I would suggest that at a minimum. Come back to the table as a board, June first, September first, and December first, and should be reviewing this. Every single time, as you are right now, how much this has come in, has that amended certificate, has our revenues gone up?
And maybe we need to designate someone to attend. To observe the budget commission meeting, still to see.
Well, I think that would be.
Where we are on track with that ourselves.
Absolutely, be very smart of a board to do, um, and then outside of this. Um, hopefully, everybody heard what we said of just ensuring that this is just operational needs, not anything capital. Um, multiple people have mentioned to me that they felt like certain budgets may be habit with some additional capital in there, I'm not sure, but we need to. We really, really, really need to stress to our department heads and elected officials, they need a cap. We need to be creating a separate capital improvement plan budget, so that way those things aren't being plum labeled, um. Also, I would suggest that when you're creating a capital improvement plan and, and, and or budget. That, that will help us prioritize and strategize into the future, and show us how much money we have, and how many budgets we can take on at a time versus. Taking on quite a few at one time. I also would suggest that, uh, when we get a new department head for maintenance, which is next week. And his assistant, that we used to begin to take a closer look into itemizing and routinely maintaining, maintaining our assets. Cleaning but not limited to buildings, cars, furniture, technology. To help us understand and strategize the lifespan of said assets, and help us project out and plan for said costs over time, versus things breaking, you know, all at once.
Right, well, we got a, we got a car lot full of cars on Panther.
Well, that could be relevant.
We got an auction we haven't had in. Since I've been here, and, and from what I understand, we have. Buildings full of furniture. Waiting to be auctioned, that we are doing absolutely nothing with, yeah, that's money that's just rotting away, it's the stuff that's older. Even though, even though that only brings us in a couple hundred thousand in general fund. A couple hundred thousand could be. Make or break with stuff.
That could be two big jobs, so.
And with this too, we need, we need to have one, some type of a. Official hiring freeze in certain departments, you know, I don't wanna freeze nine one one, or certain emergency services. Um, police, but in some of these other departments, we, we may wanna. Look at that. And then, not to sound like. Musk, but as people retire, we gotta evaluate each and every position to see. How essential it is to streamline then. Some of these departments over time. And we, we all. Have employees, I guess, we went in and looked at every department, and every employee, and productivity, and stuff like that. I'm sure over time. Clearly, I think there are some. Positions that may not need to be there. Could be absorbed in the other. Clearly, I think there are some positions that may not need to be there, could be absorbed in the other positions, but. I would not wanna get rid of anybody, but at the same time, as they retire or as we have movement, you know, we need to evaluate. But that doesn't solve us to one point, whatever.
Two million, oh, the one point, alright, the two million court reports. That can't be replaced if you include it in your general budget down the road.
You would have to re-read it, so right now it's just.
We have to make a resolution to vote on. Try, you got two million laying there, but you gotta use it, I understand, but can we use it? Appropriated from the general later on? I don't know, Bill.
That's, yeah, Bill Danz, Prosecutor's Office, it is part of the general fund, it is, it is. I don't recall the timing of that, whether it was certified as part of the revenue for this year because of the timing of when that was actually transferred from. Or, okay, so then that that certified amount of the sixty-six thousand instead of sixty-four was actually including that. That two million, because though there was a request to use it for, you know, sort of special purposes, by statute, it is part of the general fund.
And by resolution, by vote, can we re-initiate it? The gifts. Can we re-appropriate it later on?
There's an item on the agenda. To move it into a special.
Well, yeah, well, what the commissioners is saying is, can we kind of borrow it?
Borrow it, yes.
We can do that, the only thing we have, we always make sure that we have enough money to replace it, then if we don't, and and we've lost it there, and we've also lost it there.
Right, it's. Administrative, um administrative adjustment.
I I think all you're doing is kicking my.
You are, you're just kinda robbing Peter to take Paul.
And then next year, we're gonna be two million short of it, going on a budget, because we already spent it. And it was budget.
And and we're gonna need some of that for security and things like that, that we all know that needs.
If you, if you took another hundred off of the nine-one-one, which we don't wanna do, it brings you down to nine fifty-four.
Three sixteen, what were you talking?
You you had mentioned taking a hundred off of nine-one-one.
Yeah, you looked in the wrong line. That one's a two, two.
No, 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 we're we're a million fifty-four, three sixteen short, if you took the hundred. Off, if you reduce them by a hundred, we'd be at nine fifty-four, three sixteen.
I guess veteran services, like I said, they're asking for six hundred thousand more, if we can get them to.
That'd have to be.
Not use two fifty, that helps us, you know, that's a quarter of it. You wanna go make that phone call?
Make the phone call.
Take a little recess and make the phone call.
Where do you want your thirst to be?
We just wanna know if they really need the additional six hundred, that would be.
If they could be one point seven eight, that's two fifty less. And it's still. Three hundred and fifty more than they had last year.
I'll try. Whatever they can do, Commissioner. Okay, so while the commissioner makes the call, I guess we're on a little bit of a recess.
Okay, I I got ahold of the director and um, she said that, first of all, she has presented to the board, um, I gave her the numbers. And she did, she did say one thing, though, she said. The economy starts slowing down and their need is greater, that more people will start coming. Uh, more things, because these other programs will be cut, things will be cut, she, you know, she did caution me on that. So I asked her, I said, you know, whatever decision that the board makes, please, you know, include that in the cover of the show, so you can understand. I delivered the message.
Good. So. Suppose we have to. Find. Your waiter.
Oh, I'm gonna put them back, commissioners, at what they asked for, so then that way we're not looking at any proper. So we put them back at what they asked for, two point oh-two-six, two hundred. I feel like we should at least be making informed decisions.
Is it the intent of the board that we get all the way down there today? Or do we say, look, we're a million, whatever off? Then everybody start looking to see how we can do that or?
They're not gonna, there's nobody else gonna go.
No, I mean, I mean us, I mean us, do we wanna make those, all those decisions right now?
I think we should, I think we should, because after we do what we do today. We're gonna get every single one of these department heads coming back to us over next week, bobbying us that they can't do it, they need this. They gotta go up, they gotta go up, they gotta go up, no one's gonna go the opposite way, so if we're gonna do the painful part. I think we should do it now and. Just prepare for, back up what we do, you know, spend time over the next days researching to make sure our numbers are correct. Budget-wise, everything forecasted, anything we can, but I, I don't wanna leave anything more on the table. We can avoid it today.
So what's our final?
Or is it easier to leave a little bit than tell them, hey, we still need another million to cut?
No, I I, commissioners, we're getting, we're really getting close, I mean, it's our, it's.
So we're one point one down, yeah, where we're at?
So putting back, yes, Molly's and I's numbers match one thousand percent, so we're one point one eight, still away. It's February twenty-eighth, obviously tomorrow's the first of March, um, again. We're T minus literally four weeks when we have to have a, an all, a budget approved, has to be a resolution, so that has to be put on the agenda. April first, so if we do not have a budget approved by April first, we are in some trouble.
I mean, so we do have four weeks.
We do, but.
Plus, people are spending right now, of this year's budget, they're operating right now as normal. So we're gonna have, the first quarter's gonna really.
Be doing that.
Well, yeah.
But they are.
So when I look at the calendar and I just wanna be realistic here, so for it to be, uh. We have the week of the third, week of the tenth, week of the seventeenth. We would have to be putting it in for the agenda the week of the twenty-fourth, to be on. It has to be, well, that's, that's it, that's the problem, guys, we really don't have till April first, because April first falls on a Monday. Excuse me, a Tuesday, so you would have to approve the budget, the permanent budget the week before. So we're really at Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, is your drop dead date to approve this budget, unless you call a special meeting, that's up to you guys. Okay, and then the.
Tuesday, what was the date?
You have till April first, which falls on, uh, Tuesday, commissioners, so that means that you have to back that up the week before. And in your regular workshop and regular meeting, you have to be adopting this budget, permanent budget, right now you're operating on the. Temporary budget and, you know, has to be done by April first, so you're really looking at a three-twenty-six date. Um, and then that only gives any cuts that we, that you guys made today. That gives any department and or elected official and what, and whoever else roughly two and a half weeks to. Figure out how to get their number down, to where you, a lot of them. And they have to go through each line level, it's not as simple as just they cut their budget like, like you guys just did, they have to find what line to kick that out of.
Wonder my Court of Appeals went up a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars.
What if we take another five hundred thousand from our budget?
You're gonna recommend at least two fifty, take us back down to nine-five.
Okay, uh, commissioners, that's, that is absolutely your choice, and I'm not gonna agree or disagree, but I just do wanna caution you. That last year alone, you spent nine point five-six.
Well, I I understand it, but i- if we take it from ours, then the revenue.
I agree.
You know, increases, then we could, we could take that and put it back in, especially for utilities and that, we don't need that to the end of the year as much.
Enough to get us through.
Right, yeah.
I just wanna make sure you knew, though.
Right, no, no, I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying that, and that takes front, no. We don't have to cut a body for that, we can just cut.
Right, but we have to cut too, that's how it works.
And so that's, so now, so now we should be only six hundred thousand off.
Okay, so if it changed to nine-five, is Martha still trying to talk and start Uber?
No, she said that there's, she's having an issue with her mic, so she's.
Five hundred fifty-four thousand, yeah. Five fifty-four, three-one, six.
Okay, I'm sorry, so you wanted to take the, the Board of Commissioners down to nine-eight point five or no?
Nine point two, wouldn't it be?
Nine one-two, okay. Okay, so then that takes us to. Six hundred and thirty thousand. We're getting better, better. Certainly, uh, they wanna take the Board of Commissioners, which would be, um, go ahead and go up.
Board of Commissioners.
The one thousand. To nine-two. Just nine-two, oh, sorry, no. Thank you, and then we should come up with, what did I say, a six hundred and thirty thousand difference? Yep, we're good, okay. Alright, we're almost gonna have a million.
We can worry the check for us, so.
We can do this.
You can worry the check for us. Hello?
Can I talk about Court of Appeals? Christie's, it's Eric Auditor's office, only a portion of the Court of Appeals budget comes from Trumbull County. Four other counties participate in this, and we receive that money from them, so that is money that we're estimating as part of that revenue. So if we cut their budget, we cut the amount that's coming from those other counties, and that means we'll have to cut our revenue too, to Court of Appeals, Court of Appeals, yes. So let's go back to there. Very small, uh, twenty-six percent basically comes from Trumbull County, the rest is coming from Astrubula, Giaga, Lake, and Portage, and that is part of our estimated revenue. Amount.
Why did it go up?
And it's based on their budget. But again, we're only paying a portion of that for, um, Trumbull County, I wanna say about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The Trumbull County portion, the other portion is coming from the other four counties.
I think that one hundred and thirty thousand is wrong. Yeah, where did that, yeah, that's wrong.
Uh, boy, guys, hold on.
So. Court of Appeals, we weren't even, it's our own mandate. We were looking at.
I I was mentioned. Like one point three million. So I wanted to make sure you guys have all the pertinent information regarding.
Are we sure that was supposed to be at one point?
Services, we were looking at, but. But he made a phone, he made a phone call.
Cause see, we've, we've already received.
Okay.
Shares, that's what I'm saying, what did they, they all kinda bump down or something?
Yeah, that's one.
Oh, is that all you need?
Yeah, it's all you need.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, I think.
We, I'm sorry, Molly, go back down, so the county courts. They only asked for five fifty, so that, they had bumped them down to one thirty, that's not even possible. Okay, municipal courts.
And then there's municipal.
Maybe that's the one, right? Yeah, that was the one, so the two were, I'm so sorry, so they said a hundred and thirty thousand, but I don't know.
So this needs to go to five hundred?
Yes.
And make sure, let's make sure everything else looks right. So which one was Christie talking about?
Did you take the other five hundred off the commissioners?
Uh, I have that at nine-two, that, yes.
That's where that's supposed to be, and but we're still a million down?
And what courts do we need to go back to, make sure that we don't cut that she just said?
Court of Appeals, I'll toss, and there.
Oh, we weren't trying to touch that, though, were we?
No, no, fire.
I I have that at three-six-six still.
Court of Appeals.
I can't, I'm sorry.
She can't see it.
It's at the very top.
Very top.
There you go. Yeah, three-six-six, we're still.
Oh, yes. Um, so we didn't touch anything there. Is that what she was saying, that you can't cut, but we didn't cut, okay, I just wanna make sure, okay.
No, she heard us talking about it, but why, what up?
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, hold on.
No. Closer than we've ever been. Commissioner, when they say they were gonna call you back about that six hundred?
No, they, they have to get through, um, they have to go through.
And and maybe, you know, you can kind of go look at the website when they're feeding us, but they don't have one for.
They have just had one, they yesterday, they need once a week.
Or courts, can we take, you know, one-one instead of one-two?
Pick it to one.
Good.
Sherry, you go one-one.
I gotta bite nine-one-ones real quick, there was some, there's potentially capital included in that two point seven, if so, we need to figure that out.
With the sheriff's department too, they said there's four hundred thousand, maybe this capital the sheriff had last year. That is an eighteen-five spent.
Oh, okay. Oh, well, hold on, let's, let me start with nine-one, let's. Oh, well, hold on, let's, let me start with nine one, let's give you that, I'm gonna go to the, Mark's here, maybe he can explain that, I'm sure. I don't think Tracy gave me any different, she wasn't, she, she gave to you guys?
Anything, no.
I thought it was sworn she had it, so I'm not, she didn't. I'll have to go back and look at her original. Yeah, so apparently. On the look, it's just, but two hundred and fifteen thousand was included in nine one one, a hundred and twenty-five thousand servers and ninety thousand for, for. Orders?
Mister Law, you said that, uh, we got you at one. Is that something you think will result in layoffs to your department?
Yes.
You'd be interested of the one million that was left in that account of donating to, to the general fund and then we re-appropriated it back to you, so you don't have to lay anybody off?
We're gonna put a title fund. Making that tattered part become a mandated expense of the county. If that's the state agency that has to run. We don't come to you for money, we have it for years.
Right, but I'm saying you have a million there, you can't use that, and you can't use.
Also leaned into it, should attend close to two hundred thousand, making appropriations over there. It's going to dip this year no matter what, even if car sales don't drop, because you're expecting the economy to drop, which will affect us, that's why there's a title fund.
Right.
But, uh, those things are to be discussed at the end of the year, you know, they're, they're totally separate and. Maybe cut three hundred thousand out of our staff over there, let us know how we lay people off. What else you say?
So you got options, that is an option if we need to filter it through and.
Alright, so back to nine one one. Employees is four hundred and two thousand dollars, uh, dispatchers are one point nine two five million. Computer service and software is seventy-seven point seven. Equipment maintenance is two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Radio contract is twelve thousand, telephone is thirty thousand, they're saying this equipment non-capital. If the two hundred and fifty-eight is truly capital. So they're saying that that should, that two fifty-eight, three one, four point seven six should come out, because it's for a server replacement and annual maintenance for tower leases equipment, which according to auditor, auditor. Would be capital, so I'm not sure where the disconnect is there, between why Casey's podium man is not capital, but Martha's saying it's capital, so I think we need to look at that. And then additionally, if someone, I guess you're asking the same thing about the sheriff's office? So, you have that some, I'll make sure that that eighteen point five is just.
Mark, can you answer that stuff? It was just, was brought up, I guess, the last winning at four hundred thousand or more may have been. The sheriff may have had capital, but it was in his general request.
I really used four hundred thousand. Okay. I have to look, I have to look, I mean, if I ask, we can see it separately, see if it's a capital. I. I felt my other vision see it, but that's a capital expenditure, I'd have to, I'd have to look, but I can't, I'm saying, it's risen, I have something to try.
So the notes say that twenty twenty-four includes four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety-seven capital expenditures, so, yeah, so you should do is take your twenty twenty-four actual, which is eight point eighteen point five four, exactly, you can deduct out four, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, so that was capital expenditure. That's what the notes say.
What's that showing under?
Yeah.
Can I explain? Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, so when you have expenses that are ongoing, expenses that are needed to run a department or an office every year, things like the annual maintenance, that would be an ongoing, uh, expense, right? You have something that's a larger expense, that's a one time, or once every five years, once every ten years, and it's a large, it's equipment. That is a capital expenditure. Last week when she was here, and she's actually started the process to do these as capital expenditures, by the way.
Okay.
So, last week when she was here, she explained this number, that two fifty-eight, three fourteen, seventy-six, and she broke it down, that a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that was to replace the servers.
Okay.
Again, that's a capital expense, that's equipment, that's a capital expense. Ninety thousand with some, for something called reporters, don't ask me to explain it, but it is equipment, and it's a one-time expense for it. I don't understand it either, I just wrote it down.
No problem.
So that total of capital, truly capital expenses in the equipment non-capital line that she gave is two fifteen.
Okay, alright, so we can deduct two fifteen, and then Martha or auditor, auditor, excuse me, I'm in here. Um, we were just looking at this twenty twenty-four actual, so probably four hundred and thirty-six thousand that the sheriff's using capital expenditure, capital expenditures.
Correct.
She, she, Mark is asking me what I, I have.
The capital expenditures, I believe, I'd have to look it up. There were, I think there were some, uh, body cams, Christie can probably tell you more, but I, and some of those are actually in the encumbrances, I know we have things that were in the body cams.
Encumbrances.
And so I can't remember the other, but I can tell you that, um, that that number sounds correct to me, and I can, I can certainly text you when I get back upstairs.
Yeah, I believe.
What's body cam?
Or downstairs, upstairs, I'd be jumping off there. Not the, yeah.
Yeah, so the encumbrances were absolutely, the sheriff's safety, including rural selections of two hundred thousand dollars. So those would have been the body cams.
Yes, and I don't remember the other thing off the top of my head, but I didn't think there was another account. Sure, I mean, that four hundred thousand, that number sounds right, I will ask that, I will ask, uh, Christie when I get back downstairs and text you.
So would it be safe to say though that we could deduct out that capital expenditure money, because when we're just looking at operating?
If you're looking, if you're looking at operating it last year versus this year, as far as that, yeah, I think so, that's mine. I can know a little more about like the salary part of the situation, but, uh, as far as that goes, we, 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 because of the way we ended up doing it, we did this to make it cleaner and then audit, right? In the past, when they would do capital expenditures, they would do them straight from the sales tax fund, either the, the nine twenty-one or the twenty, the justice or the undivided. It's cleaner for audit, for us to take, uh, when we do a capital expenditure, and how we did it all last year as opposed to how it's done previous, to take the money from the nine twenty-eight or nine twenty-one, once the capital expenditure's been approved, and you'll see on those resolutions, and we'll say, move from the nine twenty-eight to the general fund and whatever the, the object code or whatever is, and we would, and we would. And that's cleaner, it's more, but in this case, it's harder because you have to kind of weed that out, it's, it's now.
I got you.
Right? You're welcome, I will text you that information soon.
So, Commissioner, if we take at least two hundred and fifteen down of nine. If that's what you choose to do. And then we'll, we'll go back to the sheriff.
Okay, put nine one one back to two points, we have two.
So you have at two point seven oh two right now.
Went back to two point five. That's a more realistic number, now you gotta watch on overtime. There's a ton of overtime being used there that needs to be overtime, but if they hire employees at a lesser rate, they're paying less.
Sorry, um. I guess we should wait for the, if that's what the board wants.
Every time you hire a new employee though, then you have benefits and everything else which costs you.
Did we bring two point five?
Um. I was just waiting on. Two, two, so, yeah, this.
Do we need to look at, I guess something we need to look at too is what are we charging for services to all the townships and cities are gone? That's something, that's a way we can make more revenues.
I, I, I said that, we need to look at the city contract, or then the townships, it's what the city spends.
Really needs to push to get this nine one one finalized. Get that, because we need that nine one one final, you need the nine one one planning committee, or whatever the correct term is, Bill, sorry, I don't know. Spot, but to, in order to adopt that nine one one final plan, which then has to go to the state, until we get that final plan done, we're just like floating ducks, I mean, we had those things have to go through the nine one one final plan, so.
And we know a rarity from what we learned last week, that most counties in the state, they still have their nine one one center under the sheriff's department, that's what.
Sixty-eight out of the eighty, so sixty-eight, I wrote that number down, it's funny, you said, uh, sixty-eight counties have nine one one operating under the sheriff's department, um. So we are one of the twenty that operates under the Board of Commissioners. Either way, or, when they will say about that, if I thought about that over the weekend, and what's interesting about that is either way, it's still in general. You do realize that, right, so, either way, we'd still be in the same spot, so sheriff's is general, but we'd be, we would be in the same exact spot we're at right now, okay? That's, that's that.
Hmm.
Welcome at two point five or two points, this two point seven oh two they were at.
So, we're gonna have to revisit this in, in, minimum three months. I'm sure we're gonna be revisiting it, because we will be, the departments will be coming to us for.
Additional money, if I give you five hundred thousand, once I give it to you, I can't take that number.
That's a good question, I, I honestly don't know the answer, don't answer prosecutor's office, I don't know the answer to that, I, I've not experienced that before.
Then, so, once you adopt the, uh, permanent budget, you would have to then go back and.
Yeah, and I, I'm wondering if perhaps the commissioners could do that, but it would be, then that, you know, any department that was spending at a different level, that could be an issue toward the end of the year, I'm not sure, that's a good question.
We might, yeah, because. Say like, if I gave you five hundred thousand and, and nine one one really needs to keep going, can I take it back from this department over here? I, I, I don't know.
I, I think we could read that, that's a question maybe if we need to.
Yeah, but readjust, but I don't know if I can take it back from.
They were already spending, what, what, you know, what Bill's saying is they would have already been spending at that methodology of, you gave us the two and a five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So if you were to pull that back this year, that would be actually probably the harder hit than it is just to give them their budget and know what to do.
I know.
Than to try to keep, you know what I mean? Um, but Commissioner Hernandez, you're right, so if we get this up, if you have the ordinance set by April first, again, remember, just my thought process was to meet again, come back to the table as of June first. But it's exactly three months, what I did was a three-month rolling calendar, we've got to come back and sit down and reassess where we're at.
Alright, what if, what if we do this? I hate to do this, but to solve a problem. The two million dollars we have, we know we're gonna use some for consultant sheriff's department hydrolo for the special needs, what if we took one, one million more of sheriff's department? Hear me out here, don't freak out, surrender, and we set aside the, a million that's in that two million as a safety reserve. And as the money comes in, and we see that we're hiring an area, instead of going that little more to this department, little more to this, little more to this, the money goes to the sheriff's department to make up that million first, and if we fall short on it, they know they got that million sitting there to back them up, so it's basically, we're giving them a budget of seventeen five, but there's another million there that's on reserve for you, so it's really eighteen five, but that's just an insurance policy with a million of that. And then, we don't have to cut anyone else anywhere else, as more money comes in the budget, as we see the tax money come in, first money in goes into the sheriff's department, and brings them back up to whole with that eighteen five, and then if we get above that, then we look at where we allocate it into other areas, and, 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 and including the sheriff's department, if we get three million in, maybe they get another million on top of it, and then a million supplemented at the other departments that may be under budget at the time or need supplemented. We don't, we don't allocate that million, but we just put it on reserves and insurance earmarked, and a million that still leaves us a million, that'll cover the cost of the other stuff we wanted to do with it. But then at least gets us to a budget, it gets us to zero. And instead of making up all this and nitpicking all these other little departments, it's all right there, and we know that, that's where we need to concentrate, making more money and putting more money back into that account.
So commissioners, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna recap this.
Kind of like paying down the, the loan you have with the most interest first, and then you worry about the other stuff.
Should you decide to drop the sheriff's department down to seventeen point five, that gets you under two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars now. The only thing I'm going to tell you is facts and numbers, and that looks like this. If we drop the sheriff's down to seventeen point five, last year they were awarded by, and they spent, expended eighteen point five, however, again, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of that was capital, so technically they spent eighteen point one non-capital. They were awarded at the beginning of the twenty twenty-four budget year seventeen point two one four, just so we're clear. That shows you basically that they were awarded seventeen point two one, and obviously they, they are and will still go over that, but if that's your methodology, then as long as the work occurs, that you revisit that when that time comes, that that's, it's up to the board.
Then we got one department head that we know is first, first seat at the table, first one fed, and we're not having nine different people come at us. Every time we, we find another dollar, want to split it nine ways, we know that money goes right in the direction where it needs to go. And then theoretically, we still have that million left over at the end of the year that we can allocate towards other things at that time.
So that value could be like a savings account.
Right, right, you got the checking seventeen five and the savings of one, that brings you to the eighteen five if you need it, but as we, as we put more money in the checking account, there's less money that needs to be taken out of savings account, that savings account can be moved over to a different savings account, and, and so hopefully we get to zero with that, and then we still have that million left at the end of the year.
Two oh one, right?
But if not, we've already agreed, if that million's going anywhere, it's going.
Two oh one sixty-five? You're wonderful.
Alright, so I'm looking.
Well, and that was taking.
Just creative math, that's all.
So we can put them back, Molly, I guess.
Put them back to the two seven?
Yes, that's what we're wanting to do.
I don't know.
That's why.
We'll recap all this in a minute, yeah, that still gives us a net positive five sixty-three.
No, I have a negative.
If you put them back at two seven? Something's wrong with the numbers. That eighteen five, you gotta take.
You're still gonna take eighteen five.
Right, I know, seven, right, you're seventeen five. Let's see, but.
Uh huh.
No, I don't.
And then. And then. And then I come down, I have. Yeah, okay. That's that. Now I still have that word, that we have to cut five six, five sixty three, thirty eight one.
Is that five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Run that by me again if we. But.
That was.
The million.
We're going kind of what you said before.
Alright.
We're kind of doing what you said before. But, yeah, yeah, we're just setting that aside, it's just over there.
How much do we have of the two available after the hundred, we have nine hundred?
Yeah, like nine hundred, right, because we're already.
Yeah, we still have five, you're right, we cut five hundred and sixty three dollars cut. Five sixty three.
Utilize.
But that's. I just wouldn't.
We can utilize the one million to the sheriff.
If he.
We have to.
Good point.
Right. And then we, then we put a hundred thousand over for the hydrola, so then at least there's nine hundred thousand sitting in there. If we have to use the million, hopefully we won't have to.
Just so, I understand what you're saying, but just so you know, I mean, where you're putting this is. Putting us under trouble, payroll.
At the end of the year, only at the end of the year.
Well, for how? Like, I mean, for, uh, just, well, a few months, we're gonna have to revisit that problem in a couple of months.
What was, I think what, what the board's saying is, don't worry, you're gonna get the eighteen five, but we're not gonna give it to you right now.
And I, and I guess the biggest concern, and I see their concern. Public perception is if we take a vote in November to give the sheriff's department an additional four hundred eighty thousand dollars for salaries, or or like what we did this year was a one point six was asked from the sheriff's department to make salaries at the end of the year. We ended up shaving it down, and we, we gave him whatever he needed, it looked bad, like the sheriff was wrong, he didn't budget correctly, if we're gonna supplement, and we don't wanna put them in this situation. We're in bed with them, it was per se with this, that we know it's, there's a big change starting from scratch, so we're gonna be side by side with you at every step of the way. To hit the goals where we need to be with the new administration and the new direction that he's leading in, which may be more expensive than the last regime, or maybe less expensive. We don't know that, we'll all take the journey with you to make sure that whatever direction it goes, we got your back with it financially. As long as the service is being met, that's expected of the citizens out there, and there's no decrease in service to the public.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that was clear before, you know, sheriff, at the end, they just put money in there, they clarified money, you know, right? And it really wasn't.
Uh oh. There you go again.
No, I just wanna make sure, did you cut the hydrola?
We moved it to, we moved it to the uh, one, two million dollar special fund.
Okay, because when we, oh, sorry, uh, Christie's Sarah auditor's office. Um, last week when we discussed this, when I moved it out of planning commission, I put a spot up in the revenue to move that from the nine forty nine, the medic sales times, that's where that was. So you have to put hydro. Or you just use that hundred thousand for part of the general, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, of what we, we're using it. We'd increased, we'd increased estimated revenues last week, um, to move the hundred thousand from nine forty nine, just like the valley vision. Which is not, using the valley vision kind of for it, economic.
So we give a lot, then we have a million, right?
Just, just make everybody aware of that.
Right?
So Christie, is it okay for them to dedicate hydrola to me to add? Oh. And, well, yeah. Is that still?
And then still the medic eight hundred thousand?
Do you still want to leave that?
Yes. Cause that makes us where we are now.
Got it, same, yeah. Information, that's helpful, okay?
You'll miss that?
Would you?
No. Matter of fact, commissioners, uh, well, I, I have a meeting at AWL. But I'm good for at least to have. Where are we at now? Thank you, Chrissy.
Yeah, okay, um, so we, I really wanna recap these numbers, but you guys need to make sure that we're just, if there's so many back and forths, um. So if we start at the top, we did not change J M S, mandated chair, we did not change the emergency M A, we didn't change regular losses, we didn't change board appeals. And we only changed the veterans to the two zero two six two hundred that they gave us on this state, so. That bucket is three point two, roughly, with the mandated appropriations. Then we went to nine, nine point two even for the board commissioners. Three even for the auditor, three million. One point two five eight point oh two two point three two for the treasurer, four million even for the prosecutor's office, seventeen point five for the sheriff's office even. One point one even for the special needs recorder. Um, one point two two five for the coroner, he was not changed, five one six five oh four eight, I left off the three one. Wait, three one. Um. Six point eight for domestic relations, juvenile work, two point four for probate, one million for court reports. One point three for county courts, five hundred thousand for municipal courts, one point two for board elections. Nine hundred thousand for planning commission, and four hundred thousand for all general fund departments, which is fifty six million, nine hundred forty eight thousand. Seventy point six three. We get there, Colin. Uh huh, okay. Then we go down to the requests, C S C A's at five hundred thousand, uh, two hundred thousand. Nine one one is at nine seven oh two two five nine point three two.
So.
But then I saw, I'm sorry.
Nine seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, two seven oh two, two five nine point three two, sorry. Uh, six thousand for the tin, hundred seventy five thousand for soil conservation, sixty five thousand for metro parks, fifty thousand for T N P. Uh, valley vision, five hundred thousand dollars out of fund nine four nine, which is Medicaid, M C O. Historical society, fifteen thousand, bare board, thirty five thousand. Uh. Ohio State Co-op, two three one five three four. Which takes our total appropriations to, I'm sorry, expenditures anticipated to sixty four, sixty eight, one, six seven two point oh five. Which is still over five hundred and sixty three dollars and sixty nine cents, and that included moving hydrola. And the two hundred thousand, or the two, excuse me. To some dedicated spot.
So we're actually five sixty three, sixty nine hundred. Over. Oh.
One hundred, I mean, over, excuse me, yes.
Let's take a thousand off of Ohio State Co-op, making two hundred and thirty thousand, five thirty four.
Two three zero five three four. And again.
And I'll donate a thousand from the sportsmanship clubs to four H to make the difference.
Wait till.
Run the green. For a few minutes.
Not that anybody.
So the phones start ringing.
Right. And then, and then we can all get a copy of that, correct?
Well, that's one thing I would ask is, none of the three of us walk away from this table until we are all in agreement with this. We are being.
I, I'm in agreement except for one little spot, but I, I just think you have to be fair, cut everybody, but. So, well, I mean, we're gonna have to address it anyway, so it's not worth arguing about, yeah, I mean.
I mean, we have a budget.
Yeah.
And we'll, they uh, we'll revisit it, need, as needed. We're gonna have to.
I think.
Just, just to let all the departments know, this is not something that we wanna have to do, this is something that we have to do to settle the budget, but we will, we're not gonna, we don't wanna see any layoffs.
Well, I think with some you're gonna.
Hopefully, hopefully.
I think you're gonna, you're gonna see it.
I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm telling you right now that.
But we can, can they, instead of layoffs, can they reduce their hours, go onto their own, go around their benefits?
So because they're their, yeah, because they're their own elected officials, um, I, it's important, can't take that, um.
Right, just as a suggestion.
Technically, our policy, I can only tell you what the policy is, is like, you have to work thirty, thirty hours to get help your benefits. So I, I mean, I guess that would be something that you'd like to, to, but I, I, the biggest buckets that I'm seeing just looking is the auditor's office. This cuts significantly in the prosecutor's, those are the top two, um.
Why, and the commissioners?
And the commissioners, yeah. So just anticipate that in, yes, I mean, I didn't do that one just yet, so the commissioners, um. The auditor. Prosecutor. You know, obviously the sheriff, but I, I, I don't know, Tom, if you guys have a answer to that a little bit? Um.
We took the same aircraft that the auditor did basically, hard work.
I, you took a lot more, well. You were initially at eleven point five, so.
And, and like I said, this, this.
I feel like June will go better maybe a little bit.
Yeah, the, Bill Dance prosecutor's office.
The only problem with that is that in September it could go back down.
Well, I was just gonna say, by June, the budget commission will have more data to rely on. The, the negative is that, you know, it could change again in the fall, the other negative is you're halfway through the year with people relying on the budgets they had. So if things don't look better by June, then you actually are in a bigger problem than you had now. Uh, so a- again, it's, it's a fluctuation, again, I, I absolutely do encourage a member of the board or, or representative to, you know, come help out with, you know, look at the numbers with the auditor's office, because to a large degree, ju- just understand that the budget commission also kind of leans on the numbers that the auditor has, so you guys have access to all that same information, but I certainly encourage somebody to come to the budget commission meetings as well.
And this is something too, this is what we just did here today. Does not increase sales tax on anybody, does not increase property tax on anybody, does not put a levy, a tariff or a fee on any citizen out there, we're working within the means of what we have without increasing anything to the public. And, but this will be very unpopular with the employees and staff, which pains me, they've been through enough the last four years to, to do this. I think we need to work every single day, kind of alternate ways to bring this back up to par, so that I don't wanna, I don't wanna read or hear or see that anybody gets cut by what we did here, but we gotta fall back on what I said at the beginning of this meeting. We are here for the cause, not for applause, and we're here to do the job and not make everybody happy, and not take care of friends and family and everything like that, that people assume with government. We're given money and we're spending the taxpayers' money to provide services that we can with the money that the taxpayers generate. I encourage and implore people, the next time you buy a vehicle, next time you go to a big purchase, do it in Trumbull County. You know, maybe instead of jumping online, go to Best Buy and buy a TV set or something, those taxes you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay them anyway. You, you're gonna pay them cheaper here than if you go to other counties and pay it, but shop locally here as much as you can, that's what, that's what the average, average citizen can do, is shop within our county borders. That's gonna benefit what we have up here more than anything. And that's gonna prevent them, you know, they're basically helping themselves by not having to pay more taxes and fees by spending their money in this county on the low six, seven, five percent rate that we have.
And, and Commissioner, Commissioner, and you and I both know this. And it isn't even Commissioner Malloy, that ARPA money helped a lot, this is a result of prior and past boards here that just did not pay attention to the business. And it was dropped in our laps, and I can't, and I can't, I can't bring Commissioner Malloy out on it either, because he wasn't here at the time, when those ARPA monies that came in made the big difference, delegating them to different areas, even incorporating them in a part of the budget. And then we were left with a bag of rocks, so you gotta deal with the, you gotta deal with the, the hand you were dealt.
I watched a, um, I watched a, uh, video last night, two years ago, I think it was Commissioner Malloy's first budget area, okay? And, uh, he was new like we're new, okay, and, and you didn't really say all about that because you were a learner, but i- i- if you go back and if you watch that video, uh, from the other two commissioners that were there, uh, they knew that when that A R P money is gone, that there was gonna be a budget problem. And that was never addressed until now, and then now it's, it's in our laps, but, but it's right on the video where they said there's just gonna be layoffs, and there's some other things that I don't wanna go into that are said there, but, but they knew it, okay? And, uh, and, and you're right, I, I can't, I can't blame Commissioner Malloy for all of it.
No, it could have been.
Maybe a little bit of it, but not all of it, I mean, no, but, you know, some of those people were here for ten years and four years and. But, you know.
And the other thing is that.
I think that's what we're trying to.
The budget was done by our auditor before too.
And, and we're trying to look down their road and say, look, look, cause next year it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little tougher next year than it is this year, I hate to say it, but with things that are in place, that things are gonna happen, but, you know, I mean, it's easy to run government when you have all the money in the world. It's tough when you don't have the money.
Commissioners, I fully anticipate, just on, just from looking, the board commissioners will come back. Just so you know, like the top five of, actually, it's, it's five, everybody else is pretty within what they had, I know, anticipated. But outside the board commissioners, to Commissioner Malloy's point, um, the auditor's office, the prosecutor's office, the sheriff, and the board elections, what's cutting. So that's your top five, outside of that, from what I'm looking at numbers of last year to this year, um. If I would say anybody outside of that that can operate within that budget, guys need to take a deeper look at, but just know that out of those top five, they are the ones that we, that you, as lovely as the board, cut the most, um. And I will note that on your spreadsheet, so that way, when, when we, when you as the board revisit this and change, you, to look at those five.
Maybe as far as re- mission.
Yes, yeah.
Oh yeah, I, I didn't, we noted that, I, I.
Yeah, so I've just noted that in there for you, so that way.
Brad. Much more we could do, till we, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Sir, ready that?
Yes.